I'll call to order the meeting of the Shawnee City Commissioners, February 21st, 2012. Call roll please.
Stevens.
Here.
Sims.
Here.
Herrod.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Collier.
Here.
Winteringer.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight will be given by Reverend Amy Perkins from United Presbyterian, followed by the flag salute. All who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. God of grace and mercy, we ask for your blessing upon the work done here tonight. We pray that our leaders will govern led by your spirit of wisdom and discernment, and that all of us may be blessed by their decisions. In the name of your son, we pray. Amen.
Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Perkins. Item number one, consider approval of agenda.
So, please.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Sims?
Hello, ma'am.
Yeah.
Want me to go ahead and take care of that?
Executive session's a little bit confusing seeing that's the only item that staff would like to make changes to. We're not ready with number 13 just yet this evening. Hopefully at our next meeting, we will be ready. Number 15, city attorney's evaluation, just given the length of the executive session tonight, we'd like to remove that one. And then, of course, number 17, which will be the follow-up to the UPA negotiations that we're not ready for, so.
And 19.
And 19.
Seventeen and nineteen, they'll go along.
Thirteen, fifteen, seventeen, nineteen.
Okay.
Move to approve last item 13, 15, 17, and 19.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Sims and a second by Commissioner Winteringer to approve the agenda. Line us 13, 15, 17, and 19. Call roll please.
Sims.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, consider approval of consent agenda. Everything okay? Any questions?
I'd like to approve.
Okay. A motion to approve by Commissioner Herrod and a second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye. No, I wouldn't hear.
Smith.
I wouldn't hear. Aye. I'm staying. I was absent.
Motion to approve.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item number three, citizens' participation. Come on up to the podium and tell us who you are, and there's a sheet there to sign your name.
I apologize, I do not know, never been to city hall meeting. My name is Steve Roller. We just moved here a year ago, December 12th. We purchased property at 22 Oak Drive, and now I hear that there's going to be a casino coming in more or less on my backyard. My problem is if the wrong kind of lights are set up, these lights could throw my son, who was handicapped, into grandma seizures. And I would be more or less starting back at a year and a half of age and have to start retraining. And I want you all to know what you might put us through. I can't guarantee anything's gonna happen. A neurologist could probably answer a lot of this better than what I could. But I do know lights do have a tendency to throw epileptic or a person with a seizure disorder into grand balls. And I didn't know about the casino going in, 'cause if I hadn't, it wouldn't bother home, and I wouldn't have sunk $220,000 into it.
This is not a place where we make comments to what you said, but we take, you haven't done this before, but we take your comments and staff.
Mr. Roller, if there's something that we can do to have some discussions about that, I'm pretty sure the tribe would be willing to have those conversations, and I know my city staff would. So, if you'll touch base at my office, we'll have some discussion about it.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Item number four, city manager presentation of employee of the month to Lynda Berg Municipal Court.
Madam Mayor, I'm gonna defer this agenda item to our city attorney.
I know a lot of you already know Lynda because she's active in the community. She moved here almost three years ago. Almost three years. She and Tim have been married almost 30 years. She has a couple of kids. She likes to travel. She likes to quilt. We have been looking to find a way to find just the perfect employee for municipal court, and we've discovered with Lynda that what we need to add is experience in emergency room and surgery suites during times of crisis, a plus. What she learned doing that, about being calm and keeping things moving, combined with her cheerful nature, has been wonderful. She is unfailingly pleasant, no matter what is going on, gives really good customer service. She started with us in July. She had a companion. They were new hires, there was no one to train them, their predecessors had both left, and she just jumped in. One of the problems we had is people neglect to show up and pay. I know you'd find that astonishing, but we had someone come and do some training, and we discovered that we had the ability to generate a letter. Lynda said, "Let me take that project." And in late October, she started every week looking at the people who didn't appear that week, and instead of us getting a warrant out, she sends them form letter. We're getting a 60 percent return. Of the 40 percent, we don't get any response from, a fair number of those have sort of neglected to give us their correct address, and those go on the warrant. This has been, we've been averaging over $1,000 a week because of this program that Lynda has put together and run all by herself. It not only gets money in more promptly for the city, it benefits the people who just genuinely forgot, and it saves us all the time and the trouble and the expense of the warrants. So, we are happy to have her as our valued employee of this month and every month. Here you go. Here you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five, consideration of an ordinance annexing property located northwest of the intersection of MacArthur Street and Acme Road, just east of Highway 177, applicant Kikapu Tribe of Oklahoma, continued from the December 19th, 2011 meeting, January 17th, 2012, and February 6th, 2012 meeting.
I guess I'll do this. There are a number of representatives here from the tribe, of the Kikapu tribe, and I know they'll be happy to visit with you, and I'm just gonna ask them to stand up so you can see. Their attorneys and I think most of their governing body is with, has come tonight. We have been working on this. As you know, they requested annexation, and when they requested annexation, they immediately said, "We want to be a good citizen, we want this to be good for everybody and to work together." So, we have reached, and you've had in your packet, I have a slightly cleaner version of it tonight, but it's the same substance, an agreement whereby we annex, and we always, when we annex somebody, have a plan of services. What's different in this case is that because they don't have property that goes on the tax rolls, and they don't collect sales tax or pay sales tax, they have agreed to pay for the services we will be providing. They are not surrendering jurisdiction to the city, and we are not taking jurisdiction. We're not gonna be out there writing tickets, we're not gonna be out there arresting people, but we are gonna provide them with services. For example, even, we will not be applying our building codes, but they've already adopted the same building code. So, their buildings will be built to our codes. That makes it safe for our firefighters to go in there. We will be providing building inspection services for them to make sure that they get a good value for their building. We'll do fire inspection for them, prevention, rescue, suppression. If they call, we'll pick up stray dogs. We aren't gonna go patrol. We'll sell them water, we'll sell them sewer if they want our water, and we'll sell them sewer. The, we won't be doing police at the present time for other reasons, as you know. They're going to pay for the construction of the roads, they'll pay for any signalization that's needed. They've agreed to install some amplifiers that have long names, but it will allow all our emergency personnel to talk to one another. That's a significant investment on their part. For the services, they're going to pay 70 cents a foot under roof for fire service. That is, has been computed by our fire chief as what it costs us to provide like service throughout the city. For the other services, they're going to pay actual personnel cost plus roll-ups, in some cases with minimums, plus 15 percent to cover the other administrative fees and so forth that those departments regularly pay. I really appreciate the time and effort that they have all put in with us, and I know Brian does too, and all the staff, we've had a number of meetings. In addition, the tribe will indemnify us and hold us harmless in case of litigation over various provisions. It is their responsibility to obtain any approvals that they may need from state or federal government, but since we are not assuming any jurisdiction and they're not ceding any jurisdiction, it does not appear that we would need the same kind of approvals that are required when you do a formal compact. So, this document then would be attached to the ordinance of annexation as the plan of services. Do you have questions of me or of representatives of the Kikapu tribe?
I had a question, I can't find it in here.
I have a hard copy, would you rather work on?
It's okay. And I thought I saw the language that you just said, that they still have to apply to the federal government.
If they believe that needs to be done, that's for them to do.
That's all their responsibility. And then the other thing was that although we won't be inspecting the buildings, they're building them to the International Building Code as adopted by the tribe.
We will be inspecting if they call and ask, and they have advised, they intend for us to have our inspectors come look.
Okay. And then the as-built drawings would be critical to fire protection.
Yes. They will provide us with copies of the plans, the as-bills, so that if the fire department needs to go in, or if someday we end up with cross-duplication, the police need to go in, they'll know the layout of the building, where things are, and they won't be going in there blind.
Right. Right. Has something similar to this been done in the state of Oklahoma?
I don't know of anything exactly like this. There are arrangements for, Tulsa has arrangements with the Hard Rock Casino for fire that's like this, for their fire services. There are other tribes and cities that have made arrangements of varying kinds for specific services. I don't know of anyone that's done essentially all these services, but that doesn't mean they're not out there, I just don't know about it. I do know places that have done little bits. I mean, water, we sell water now to other tribes and provide sewer, some things in city limits and some things out. Do you know, you don't have any just like this, Greg?
I don't know of anyone, any of the tribe that's comprehensive of this, to do all of the other agreements, the lock-in agreements, those, those would be anything for fire protection to police lock-in agreements. And it's a second, mostly instances, which are water and sewer are just on a contract basis. So, it's a little more comprehensive of the tribe. Then it will, both the city and the private sector.
If you're comfortable with this, the, normally, we just approve the ordinance with the plan of services attached. I think this, in this case, probably want a separate approval of the plan of services and then approval of the ordinance after that. And you have approved it, the tribes approved it, right?
The resolution for?
Yes.
The memorandum of understanding?
We've not approved that yet. The one that's in front of the ballot, that you approved that, yeah. But we approved the resolution asking for the annexation.
Okay. I don't know that I want to annex it if you haven't approved it.
We just got that, I think from the [inaudible]. They have to have, just as the city does, they have to have those same agendas and set that. So, we, they could have formally approved it, but that wasn't a period. So, let's put their, have their agenda coming up next week, first of all, unless it doesn't have to be.
If anyone wants to wait one more time, I would hate for us to approve an ordinance and then not have, we could approve the plan and not approve the ordinance, and then we can amend the plan. Why don't we do that? If you're ready to approve the plan and not approve the ordinance.
The plan being the memorandum of understanding?
Yes.
So that we approve that, and then when they approve it, we come back with the ordinance?
Once we approve an ordinance and we publish it, if we, if something happened, it'd be too hard to change it. That's my concern.
I don't know how flexible the regulations do require, I don't know. I don't see if there's any problem from the tribe's perspective, or the people just like to say we have to have this deadline.
I understand. My recommendation is that you approve the memorandum of understanding, give them a chance to approve it, and we have a signed document, then approve the annexation at the next meeting. I think that's the very best way, then we have all our i's dotted and our t's crossed. I know for those who want to break ground, this is just very difficult to wait even five more minutes, but that's...
That's your recommendation?
That'd be my recommendation.
Okay.
I move to approve the MOU.
All right, a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Collier. Any other questions or comments? Are we approved, what is in our packet that has draft on every page? Is that?
That's this.
Exactly the same.
And I have clean copies. Well, that's exactly this, except this one's formatted correctly with the margins, and it got cleaned up after I messed with it.
Okay. But what we are approving is what's in our packet? Okay. That's the motion, and that's the second.
But I have clean ones for you to sign.
Okay. All right. Can you call roll please?
Sims.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Herrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. So, we will have on our next agenda potentially the ordinance. Okay. All right. Item number six, consider acceptance of public easements and dedications associated with the final plat of Cottage Park of Shawnee, and authorizing recording of final plat and attainment of signatures. Okay.
Recommendation of the staff.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Herrod to accept the final plat and the recommendations of staff. Yep. Do I have a second? Looks like it's dependent on the Oklahoma Housing Finance Authority. I don't know what to tell you what page it is. So, I have a motion, do I not have a second? Are we still studying?
I have a second.
Okay. A second by Commissioner Sims. Do we have questions? Call roll please.
Herrod.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Collier.
Aye.
Winteringer.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven, acknowledged sales tax report received by, received February 2012.
The news is much better than it has been the last few months. Actually, February, we received $1,624,568, which is actually 12 percent higher than last February, and we were up $251,000 from the year before, which, we were, you know, we've been running a deficit sales tax through this budget year, so pretty now, with a good month, we're flat now. So, I mean, we're still just slightly under, but it sure looks better than being down, we were down about $180,000 as of January, so certainly March will be just as healthy.
It really doesn't follow the curve. Do we know why it just shot right up there? Is there anything that's different?
When I talked to the former tax commissioner a couple months ago with the coal situation, 'cause we really thought they would increase. They take averages for the big boxes, so I think that's all catching up, and it's gonna be more even throughout it. The first few months, they don't have a whole lot of information to get from coals and how the sales are gonna be, 'cause I think with the big boxes, it's more of an average, and then they catch up, you know, they're a couple months behind.
Okay. 'Cause usually it follows, I mean, it's, the low months are low months every year, and the high months are high months every year. The trend is basically the same, but this was just almost like off the charts.
Well, there was a problem too with coals, and we did get some, I think that was in January, they were actually paying another municipality.
You got that straight now.
Yeah, Oklahoma City, as I recall, was up like 12 percent this reporting period as well, so it's weird.
Okay.
Statewide, I would say.
So, hopefully, it's starting on a trend, but...
That's very good.
I mean, it's just, you know, we were down, you know, almost $200,000, what we projected on budget, and we were very conservative, so it was nice to see some healthy numbers for a month.
We missed the opportunity to defy the blizzard and fuse nose to horns.
Yeah. Right. Right. Okay. Thank you. Item number eight, discussion of alternative funding methods and/or timing of capital improvement projects that were rejected by the voters on February 14th, 2012. This is the agenda item that I believe I sent to everyone, asking that it be on here specifically for, because we're coming up into a new budget year, what are we gonna do about emergency communications, and what are we gonna do about the swimming pool? And I believe there was some discussion among staff and at the agenda meeting also, and just wanted to open up and kind of tell us what the situation is and what we might expect. I mean, I know you don't have all the answers right now, and I think we ought to at least talk about what the options are, what we're looking at, what our options are.
Certainly, and the staff's here for any technical details that the commissioners may have. Of the propositions that we had on the ballot last week Tuesday, the two that were most important that you mentioned were the pool and the emergency communications. We've been pretty forthright about with the emergency communications, that we have some spots that are not covered as well as we'd like for them to be covered. Plus, we face some new technology issues that'll be coming up after 2013. That price tag is about $2.5 million. About a million and a half for a north tower site, and about a million dollars to re-equip this tower site here behind City Hall. All of which are used by all of the 800 megahertz of law enforcement and public safety throughout the state on each of these towers. For us, in our area, that tower, North Tower, means more coverage for areas that we have dead spots, and we consider that to be a pretty, pretty serious issue that we needed to address, and we need to find the dollars for it. The numbers are pretty high when it comes to actually talking about that, and Motorola is the proprietary company that has our communication system as well. So, having said that, we've got choices that we have to make here shortly, and in conversations with commissioners and with staff, we feel like it's important that we get started on those. There's been some conversation about grant funding sources as relates to the public safety communication system. Probably, maybe about 10 years ago, the Department of Homeland Security used to do more communication system grant funding type sources, and more particularly, it was for the combination of regional 911 centers and things of that nature. There has been some monies here or there for communications, but right now, there really aren't any. Where I think we could possibly come up with some participation is whether you're tribal law enforcement, a city, the county, the ambulance service, they're all using our 911 system, our communication system. And so, there is some possibility for us to seek additional funding from those partners. If you'll remember, in our capital improvement plan, we had about $500,000 that was in there for that very purpose. And that was just staff's thought that with tribal assistance and with potentially the sheriff's department assistance and potentially React's assistance, we'd be able to generate about a half a million dollars worth in contributions toward the communication system. We certainly think we need to revisit that. We also certainly think that as part of this year's budget cycle, we need to begin thinking very seriously about how we're gonna finance our portion, whatever portion that it's gonna cost us out of the next 18 to 24 months' worth of design and installation of the new equipment. Having said that, our only choice at this point is the third penny. The third penny's already allocated out for other uses, the largest use being for roads. Roughly $2.3 million in there comes into roads every year for repair and maintenance and construction. There are several other portions, economic development, police and fire, debt service, and commissioners will remember that in December, we financed a short-term loan for $3.25 million for the expo, the airport walking track, and the library roof. So, we've already taken a portion of what we traditionally used for principal and debt service out of that third penny, and that is probably in the $900,000 a year amount. That third penny generates about $5 million a year, but it is used for very serious capital needs in our city, for our year-to-year needs for capital improvement, whether that be playground equipment, or roads, or automobiles, or lawn mowers and trimmers. That's what that money's used for. So, we've got some tough decisions to make. As relates to the pool, and then I'll take questions unless you prefer for me to stop. James Bryce and I, the operations director, had a conversation on Wednesday about that very issue. In 2008, we kind of looked at some numbers and what it would take to bring that pool that was built, Depression era, up to some sort of code. If you've not been in it for a while, you need to go into it. In 2009, the city commission approved about $240,000 to repair the filtration system in there. It was, it was very old at the time. That was... That was out of the response of the State Department of Health that said that we have to make sure that we do a couple of things. One was the drains at the bottom of the pool and the other was the filtration system. That still leaves us with distribution of treated water, filtered water and unfiltered water to and from the filtration system that is under the deck on that pool. It is as old as the pool is. We have made some changes to it, but it's not providing the filtration like we'd like for it to. And it's putting a little bit of sand and sedimentation into the pool and it's causing, um, additional cleanup, additional man-hours to have to take care of, uh, the sedimentation that gets into the pool because of some of those lines that are in there. Um, the new regulations for pools, probably if we, if we touch that pool, we're going to have to fix it and bring it up to what pool codes are required by the state of Oklahoma. So, uh, we do not have numbers for that yet. I can't quote you and say, "It's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it's five hundred," whatever that number may be. We're looking into that. The latest numbers we have is two thousand and eight and staff was hopeful that, uh, the voters would approve that. So we haven't done anything in terms of coming up with any new numbers since then. So what I would say about that is hopefully in the next week or so, I will have some numbers regarding, uh, what it'll cost to, to, uh, take care of the pool. We have had discussions about opening the pool or not opening the pool this spring. I think we had always thought that the pool would be open this spring so that we could provide our citizens with that quality-of-life, uh, attraction. We would realistically have the voters approved this, uh, initiative probably twelve to eighteen months. We'd probably be under construction or finishing up construction next summer, one would assume, if we had had the dollars approved for that project. So, uh, our plan is to open the pool again this season. I don't know that we'll be able to do that again next season. We have some tough decisions to make, but I'll have some numbers hopefully for the commission at our next meeting or before, and I'll be sure to get those out to you. You know, I, I, Madam Mayor, I've had several conversations with several commissioners about what happened in, in the bond issue on Tuesday. And I know you and I have talked about what we think might be the next best course of action. I, I really think we need to go back to the citizens. I think we need to, uh, have some open meetings that our citizens can come to that they can tell the commissioners what their pleasure is. I, I don't know about, I, I don't know that we want to have any more discussion than that. I think we should go back to the citizens and see what, what it is they think, uh, is, is next. And with that, I'll, I'll leave it. Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Yes, you and I did talk about whether or not, you know, we could have some public meetings. And, and it goes beyond, uh, what part of no don't you understand. But we do truly have some needs. And I think part of the discussion is how might we still do the, uh, complete these projects? And so if there are some, um, if there are some ideas and as we move forward and looking at our third penny and what we may have to sacrifice, if, if there are some, some ideas from citizens, I think we ought to, we need to talk about that publicly. Um, and I'm very in favor of that, but that's what we've done for three years too. And I think we need to stay, we need to stay on track with that. I don't think it's anything that's gonna be, um, decided among two people or four people or ten people, but it needs to be a public, a public discussion. And immediately, I think we do have two, two projects here that, um, that we need to make some decisions on that, that do have to be done. Public safety is huge and, um, and whether or not we open the pool and what it's gonna, how can we do that? Do we still meet health department, uh, regulations when we open it? And, and truly, what is the life of it as, as the years go by? Or has it reached its shelf life? And I think those are some tough community, um, conversations that we need to have right now. I will ask, it, we have some, uh, numbers right up here. Is this the communication tower information? So we're looking at, if I just added this up, what is this, two point one million right here with just this? Is this our portion or the entire part of just this quick? That's the entire portion of what you feel we need to do and meet before 2013? Okay.
So, so Dawn, the difference then of the three million that we asked voters for and the roughly two point two million relates to the, the nine-one-one center? Would that be accurate?
That's correct. It relates to, to the, to.
The nine-one-one center and to subscriber units for police cars and fire trucks, which we do not have on here. These were just, these are just the figures for the two tower sites.
What, what does that subscriber unit add to the tally?
A subscriber unit, it depends on how, again, it was a fluid mix because we were looking at how much we would get. A subscriber unit today runs about four thousand dollars, uh, per unit. So, and you look at roughly fifty handhelds, uh, forty-some-odd vehicles in the police department, uh, twenty-two vehicles in the fire department and roughly the same amount of handhelds there. Where do you go? It's a big, it's a, it's a big number.
Does, does this two point two million solve?
It gets, it gets you the infrastructure of the two towers, brings it back up to date. We can, we can get by the next, eh, with subscriber units. If we, if we continue the process, if we're able to continue the process of buying a few a year, we can, can, can meet the 2013 deadline, we'll be okay. We'll have current radios in police and fire at that point, but.
Does two point two million solve the dead spots that we have in our community?
We sure hope it does. We've done engineering studies to look at coverage.
Okay, so you don't need the new subscriber devices, I guess is my question, do you have?
For the dead, I, I need the two tower sites. I need the upgrade of this tower site and the North Tower site are, are the most important things at this point.
And when we discussed, gosh, months ago about the North Tower side, aren't there some opportunities for other entities to participate in that?
That's something that we said that we would want to look at. Because there are multiple users of the system, as it were, the Oakland system. Pretty much all of the public safety in Potawatomi County is now, uh, have access to the eight hundred system. Uh, so we would want to look to those partners and see if they could assist us with that process. There are, the, the, as part of the system, the city of Shawnee owns the current tower that we have sitting in the parking lot. But as part of that system, the state of Oklahoma has towers at Pink, at Lexington and at Ada, uh, as well as in Oklahoma City, which we share. So if we have a, a police officer, for instance, that gets in a pursuit on I-40 headed westbound, uh, they're handed off from one tower to the other. So the, the, that police officer doesn't have to mess with dialing in on his radio while he's trying to drive and do those kinds of things. So we, we, we share the equal resources, but each individual entity is responsible for maintaining their resources. So that's one of the, of the things that we had looked at. As you recall, when we looked at the, the bond issue proposal is to talk to those partner entities that, uh, use the system, that, that are subscribers to the system, as you will, and see if they might be able to contribute some to building out the infrastructure with that North Tower.
First thing we need to do is find out who all uses the tower and, and form some kind of consortium so that Shawnee's not picking a bill for the county and everybody else. I don't know why in the world we think we have to build a million or two million dollar tower and pay for it for everybody else. And I assume that that's what we're doing now with this tower out here in the parking lot is we're providing that at no cost for anybody else. So, uh, you know, that's one of the things we can't afford to do anymore.
So we also can't afford not to do something.
We need a list, excuse me. We need a list of all the people who, uh, participate and have, and access that tower, including the, the rural fire departments. Coed has money every year that they give to the rural fire departments. Why can't we take advantage of some of that money? I just don't think we pursued enough avenues to take care of the, of the cost there. And I don't know why it has to be on the back of the, all the Shawnee taxpayers when everybody else is using it.
I think we also can't afford not to take.
Well, we saw, we saw.
Excuse me.
Yeah, we saw why that goes.
Well, we can't afford not to take immediate action. We had an incident within the last few months. A number of officers responded to it in a dead spot, a serious incident. And when you tell people that an officer has to move two or three steps to the left to be able to hit the tower, it's a problem. And when we have somebody injured or killed because of that, it's on our watch. And I, I'm not willing to do that.
I'm willing for everybody to pay their fair share.
Agreed.
And, uh, it's not up to Shawnee, city, to taxpayers to pay for that, uh, for everybody else.
Agreed.
If it was the county or out in the county, then they should be responsible for helping out with it. Sheriff's Department, the county, uh, all the, the county commissioners and everybody else. And that's what I say, I'd like to have a list of who all participates in that. And then let's go from there and see, uh, what can be done.
I might know that. I, I will provide that for you, Commissioner.
And I completely agree with you, but we don't have time to wait.
We don't have time. We've got all of the time in the world.
Unless you lose an officer out of that.
I'm sorry. We lost an officer here in town, so, you know, and we had plenty of coverage.
Dawn, have you spoken with some of the other entities that, um, would be served by a different tower than the one we currently have?
I have visited with some of, of the, uh, emergency services organizations. Uh, and certainly, they would be willing to entertain, uh, helping foot that bill. They're, they're obviously in as much, the same boat as we are, shrinking revenues, uh, shrinking federal dollars, eat into grant funding opportunities as well for them. And so, but certainly, it's something that, that they have said that they would certainly, would take a look at.
Would consider.
Yes.
Is there any kind of advantage from Shawnee or one entity owning the tower and leasing it to others? I, I guess that's how it works. Or is it something that we can partner in and have, uh, ten entities, um, own?
We can, for, to establish the tower, there's, there's, we can make that work however we need to, to make that work, uh, with the, other organizations that, that would want to invest in it. Uh, I will, there's a, uh, some issue relating to the, the partners within the system that we'll have to talk to them specifically if we, as when we start looking at those kinds of things. We will need to get involved with, with them. But we've had this larger global conversation as system owners. And the system is owned, the, the infrastructure now is owned by the city of Tulsa, the city of Norman, the city of Edmund, city of Owasso, the state of Oklahoma, the city of Shawnee. And so, uh, the people who are the staff people who, who run those systems for those entities have frequent conversations. And that's one of the larger issues that's been brought up. And, and we've talked about trying to formalize that process a little bit more. We got into a little bit of an issue with the ownership at the state level because, uh, the new chief information officer position is being, has been created. They're moving all of the infrastructure over into that and working through that process to make that happen. Where the radio system is gonna fall, we're not exactly sure at this point. So everybody's reluctant to, to like determine where that's going to rest to, to try to do any formal action. But it's certainly something that's on our radars as, as the system managers. Uh, that's something that needs to be taken care of.
Is that something that you can, um, get with these other entities, um, and invite them to the session too, I guess?
Absolutely.
But, but, but within a couple of weeks or a month, I mean, is that something? Because if we need to discuss even our portion for this budget year coming up, time is of the essence.
I, I will, uh, make every effort to contact all of the public safety agencies that use the system in Potawatomi County to get you the list obviously first. We can do that in the morning, uh, to you. And then I'll contact those entities and we'll see if we can get to the table and see what their, what the, their interest is at this point.
Okay.
And where they're at with that process.
Is the entire two point two subject to that participation or is the, uh, existing side on us?
My, my thought would be to make the entire two point two project.
Try to.
Because they're gonna use this tower just as well as they would use the North Tower if they're in the area.
Madam Mayor, I mean, I, at the, at the risk of throwing rocks out there, I'm just gonna lay it out there. Commissioners, I agree with you all on all of y'all's comments. The fact of the matter is, we have not worked very well with our partners when it comes to public safety. We have a nine-one-one center that's in the county that's located in Tecumseh. And then we have Shawnee's nine-one-one center that's located in the basement of City Hall. McLeod does their own. The right way to do this is to create an authority that can hold assets and leverage debt. So somebody had to step up to the plate and figure something out. And unfortunately, we're the big city in Potawatomi County, so we get saddled with a lot of that sometimes. Mr. Harrod, I agree with you. We need to partner up and we're gonna try to do that. I'm not saying that, that the people that went before me or before us really had, did anything wrong. It's just we need to begin to work more together on these things because they're expensive.
It parallels a lot of other things within our city or within our county that if it's duplicated services or duplicated infrastructure, if there's a way that we can partner, it's always best. That's right.
But, but as an example, why, why would Potawatomi County or a tribe want to, to contribute money to something that they don't have any say in how it's managed? That's how an authority works. We put it into authority, they can leverage debt. We all put people onto those authority seats and then everybody has a voice at the table. And that's, I'm not saying we can't make it happen. I'm just saying that's the way to make it happen. And we haven't been very successful at it yet.
And that, that was my question about can we have many entities own whatever this infrastructure is? Because, I mean, if another entity owned it and we were leasing, and I'd be concerned that they were doing the maintenance and doing the things because it's putting us in jeopardy, their performance puts us in jeopardy. And I'd like to have a seat at the table or some, uh, some assurance that we're getting, uh, what we have to have out of that capital.
Hence, your staff and myself and Potawatomi County have been working on combining the nine-one-one system.
Yes.
It's a start. And we're having those conversations about an authority and where the employees will be. And I'm proud to say that we've been doing it over the last two to three years. So let us continue to work on that. And your comments are very well received to us. We feel the same way as you guys do about it.
Dawn, is there a lot of maintenance on these things?
Unfortunately, yeah, there is. And it is, just as your other technology, uh, devices are, there's new technology that comes along. So there's going to be upgrades that you have to do periodically. Uh, we could get a lightning strike and it could cost us five to eight thousand dollars, uh, even though we have lightning protection on, on the tower now. So the, 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 just the, the beacon that we, the, the tower lights that we had to replace, that even though we have antenna lightning protection, power, through the power system, or somehow lightning got into the, the flasher that controls those tower lights. And it cost us right at thirty-five hundred dollars to replace just the box, uh, on the side of the tower. Then you've got tower lights and you got, eh, the tower climber time and stuff like that. So you're talking about, about five thousand dollars from that one lightning hit. Uh, fortunately, those are few and far between, but it does happen on occasion. And you have to be, plan to deal with that. I have a transmitter that's down right now. It's a seven-channel site normally. Right now, it's a six-channel site because I have a transmitter that went out. Can't find, they, they no longer make that transmitter. I'm trying to get it replaced through, through a used source somewhere or repaired by parts somewhere that I can find. And that's gonna probably run me about a thousand dollars to do that. So those things happen. Yes, sir.
I'll just say again, this is a critical lead. It's not a won. And it's something now that we vetted through the election process that we know more details about some of these dead spots and some of the issues we're dealing with. It's life safety that we're talking about. And I think it's a critical factor of next year's budget.
We won't know anything about, uh, one cent, how much money we have left and a one cent sales tax until we get the Kickoo Project bid and know what our area responsibility, how much responsibility we have in that. So until that happens, uh, we just, we, there's not anything, we don't have an idea, don't have a clue. So until that Kickoo Project bid and we realize how much, if any, money we have, uh, you know, to spend on other things, we're wasting our time. And I appreciate your comments, uh, Mr. McDougal. And I agree. I mean, I, I don't think Shawnee can afford to be totally responsible for this, or part of the council. I just don't think so.
Realistically, how long would it take us to form this coalition with all these governments? Because I see them having the same discussion we're having. They're, they're, they're in trouble too, so.
With willing partners, thirty, sixty days. But that's not the issue. The issue is. The issue is all of the entities involved having issue with their, their 40 acres, if you'll, if you'll let me say that. I mean, that's, that's really the issue. And there are some, some hard work going on behind the scenes to make it happen. So I look forward to it. We've been working hard for it for two years and we're getting closer and closer every day.
Are you talking about 911?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, two separate.
Well, I mean, I really see them as one commissioner seems. I mean, you, everybody's, everybody's got a, got a pay to play. That'll probably be the first thing, front page on the news star tomorrow is the city manager said, pay to play. We're all using the system, we all need to pay for it.
But it's beyond the 2.1 or 2 billion dollars for communications?
Well, sure. I mean, I think there are many other places that we could partner if that's what you're, if that's what you're.
So I mean, there's additional costs to that partnering in that.
Sure. And I will, I will admit that we've had a lot more conversations with County Commissioner Dennis and Richards and, and Mr. Stackhouse. We've had a lot of conversations with them over the last couple of years. So I'm confident we can have those conversations and, and see about getting this, this matter done with. Thank you.
There's another thing that, about the improvements is, I don't think there's anybody in this room that doesn't agree. I think the voters spoke and they said the infrastructure is more important than anything else. So until we get the report back on the sizing and everything else from, I don't know, the municipal authority, there's not any use of trying to do anything. When we get that information, then we set out an examiner and see where we're going and, and take a look at the infrastructure. That was, that's still, when the voters out there, that's still the number one priority.
Well, I think they, I would agree with you and I think they also said no to any tax increase, be it sales and tax, a sales tax increase or property tax. And in the process of this, there's been a lot of discussion about alternate funding that may be available. I'm unaware of it. And I would personally like to engage the community. This has been a, a great issue to get everybody involved in talking about our community and continue that discussion process with roundtables as, for lack of a better word, as the mayor suggested.
Well, it's.
We've had these meetings, I'm sorry, but we've had these meetings. We had meetings with the chamber and have economic development and everybody else and it goes by the, over our heads, we don't do anything. So I, I'm not for any more meetings. Let's wait and find out what the priorities are and we'll wait and see what our budget figures look like and things like that. I think it's all premature. And if it's this big emergency before, why didn't we say so then? If it's this big emergency before, why wasn't it when we were running the election and calling the election and stuff like that? It wasn't then, but now it's all of a sudden that big emergency.
Well, it wasn't an emergency, right?
It's never been explained to be that big an emergency.
I think it's the.
I've sat on this commission for what, three years now and it's never been explained that, you know, we're getting people killed out here north of town, stuff like that. Now, my suggestion is, there are going to be some changes on the commission come up in whatever the election time is and we need to do a con- concentrate on getting a budget, see how much money's left and see how we want to spend. And that'd be a commission decision that first of all, we see, work on budget, see how much money's left left out of the Kickaboo project, if any, or if we've got to come up with more money or what. So I, by now, I'm not interested. I think the city manager, if he wants to meet with the, with the Chamber of Commerce and drive in some fences there and economic development or anybody else, that's fine with me. But.
Well, I think we have, we have some things, I mean, like, like whether or not the pool's going to be open or are we going to continue to underwrite that?
We don't have the figures to know whether we're going to want to try to pursue PSCF or what.
But I think that's what we have to direct staff to look at right now so that we can make that decision before July.
The city manager said.
It's for our budget for July 1st.
The city manager said he'd have that information.
And there's bits of very vocal citizens that I think need to be involved in this process as we talk about the priorities of $2 million in our budget is a significant piece of the budget of, of capital dollars. And if that's what, I've heard this commission say we want to tackle that this year in this budget cycle, we need some community input. And I think it's important that, that those have raised, that have raised questions and have solutions or have ideas about alternate funding. I think we need to get together and figure those things out. It's not the chamber or SEDF, it's the community. And, you know, I think in the process of our, of this election, we lost sight of what this commission actually wanted to do. And that was to deliver to the community an opportunity to vote and tell us what they wanted. It wasn't about yes or no, winning or losing. It was simply that through two different subcommittees on this commission, we narrowed a list of $200 million worth of items to 47 million. And it wasn't to get anybody mad, but these are the items that this commission believes the community needs to look at. And we gave the citizens of our community that opportunity. They resoundingly said no. Five to one, six to one on the ballpark and four to one on other issues. What I think we also have to worry about, slowly, as you can see by our sales tax, we're becoming a drive-through community. People that we've relied on to the south and east of our community are driving through us to Midwest City, to the outlet store on the west side of Oklahoma City. We need to figure out what's going to make us a drive-to location. That's the only way we're going to see our sales tax dollars stabilize and grow. So I think it's critically important that we as a community come together, perhaps at the expo, wherever we can put a large group of people together and have a open roundtable discussion about where this community wants to go.
Anyone else down there? Will you work with your staff to get us some information? Maybe some things more detailed, this other partners that we could have as far as public safety goes? Where we're at with the pool? Where we're at with our contracting agent that, you know, runs the pool for us? What it's going to cost us? What we were planning on? I mean, even if it had passed, we would have kept the pool open this, this summer. But if, if we don't have a larger plan for that, I don't want to be spending good money after bad, if that's the way that goes. Because it's not an investment in the improvement. So, I mean, I think that's, we need to have that discussion and that's, that's not an easy one here right now.
We'll be glad to do that, Madam Mayor. And if it's the commission's pleasure, we'll put some roundtable discussions together with the citizens. I can't help myself, I'm a planner at heart, I always will be. I want to hear from, from the people that I work for every day and, and if that's the commission's pleasure, then we can certainly put that together.
I, I do think we need to have a little bit more information before we get to that point. We won't have everything resolved, we won't have the answers to everything, but we know that we have to approve a budget in a couple of months. And if we need to make some adjustments to our normal procedure, I think now's the time to do that. So speed is of the essence as far as trying to get us some information on what the needs are now, what they, what we might can wait a year or two for and what the impact is of, Okay? Anything else?
My suggestion is that you sit back and let everything cool off for a month or so and, and have your meeting then because there are some angry people, there are angry people out there and you need to give it some cooling off time. So I would suggest that you, anything you do be at least a minimum of 30 days down the road.
Point taken. Okay. Item nine, new business.
Madam Mayor, I'm not aware of any new business or administrative reports this evening.
Wow, okay. Item 11, commissioners' comments. Anything else?
I have a question. The fire department, I noticed on Oklahoma City V station that they're having workshops about these electric cars and how to panel those, stuff like that. Have y'all thought about that or anything I approach you about that?
Did the battery operated cars, stuff? Yes, sir. We've had a couple of classes on those for extrication and stuff.
Thank you.
I will move to the executive session items and I will read them both, we'll vote on both to see if we go for both items. Item number 12, consider an executive session for discussion and possible action of settlement of workers' compensation claim of Anthony Grasso, case number 2009-08537A pursuant to 25 OS 307B4.
Move to go with executive session.
Okay, a motion to go into executive session by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Wintering.
Do we have to take these in this order? Can, once we go to executive session, can we take? I'm not going to stay for the full session, so I just want to.
We could take them in either order. The first one's really pretty short, I think, but we can do them, have, you want to do them once we get down there.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cogier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 14, consider an executive session to discuss potential claims, litigation or other options regarding encroachment into city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 25 OS 307B4.
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Harrod to go into executive session.
Second.
And a second by Vice Mayor Cogier. Call roll, please.
Harrod.
Aye.
Cogier.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Mission carries.
Okay. Where are we going? Okay. We ready? We're back in session. We are on item number 16. Consider matters discussed in executive session regarding the discussion and possible action of settlement of workers' compensation claim of Anthony Grasso, case number 2009-08537A pursuant to 25 OS 307B4. It's your pleasure. Option or none?
You've forgotten the number.
12 is a five.
Okay.
They've forgotten the number.
Was that not?
We, we award Mr. Grasso 12.5.
Authorize a settlement.
Authorize a settlement at $12,500.
$12,500 to Officer Grasso.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wintering and a second by Commissioner Stevens. Could you get that, Phyllis?
Yes.
Okay. Call roll, please.
Wintering.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod. Sorry, he left. Peterson.
Aye.
Cogier.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Item 18, consider matters discussed in executive session regarding potential claims, litigation or other options regarding encroachment into city's utility service area by other entities as authorized by 25 OS 307B4. Any action to be taken?
No action.
No action. A motion to adjourn by Commissioner Stevens.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod. I'm sorry, I did it again. Peterson.
Aye.
Cogier.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, February 21st, 2012. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So move.
A motion by Vice Mayor Cogier, seconded by Commissioner Sims to approve the consent agenda. Call roll, please.
Cogier.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Vice Mayor Cogier motion and seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Cogier.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll open up the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, February 21st, 2012. We have a quorum. Item number one is consider approval of consent agenda.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Sims.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Smith. Let, let Phyllis catch up.
I'm, I'm with you.
Okay, call roll, please.
Sims.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Cogier.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number two, new business.
Madam Mayor, no new business or administrative reports this evening.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Yes.
By Commissioner Stevens, seconded by Commissioner Sims. Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Sims.
Aye.
Harrod.
Aye.
Wintering.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.